So here we are, we're back, back with Sybalo. We got Jason here. Say hi to everybody.
Hi, everyone.
All right. And we're here in the studio with Steve Cooper, who's running for place five in Sybalo. Uh, that's they, that is now an at-large position, which means it's a whole city thing. I don't believe we've ever met before, Steve. And, and I'll get to my first question here, but I understand you've been on the, the SUD board, of course, uh, the Guadalupe Valley SUD board, and you, so you've already served in office. So this is, should be an interesting interview because you've campaigned. So tell me about yourself. Who are you? What do you do? And who do you do it to?
Oh, thanks, Kevin, Jason. I appreciate the time. I'm, uh, I'm about a 20-year resident of, uh, of our area, Sybalo. I, I moved here from, uh, the last time I think was Colorado. Um, I, I've lived all over the United States. Uh, the company I was with sent me, um, different cities, different projects and got to San Antonio and opened up the Valero warehouse over on Tri-County Parkway about 20 years ago. And, uh, the company said, okay, that project's done. Now we're sending you to Sacramento, California. And I said, no, I'm staying right here. This is home. And I've happily made this my home. I'm, I'm a proud, long-term resident now. This is next to the place I was born. This is the longest place, longest period of time I've lived anywhere in my whole life. So, um, I, I have several kids, um, graduated them from college, one from Tarleton State, one from University of Houston. My son, uh, is a Marine. Uh, he works for the DAV now. He's, uh, supervisor at the Salt Lake City DAV office. Uh, very proud of all my kids and, and what they've accomplished. Um, I've got a beautiful lady in my life. Her name's Dawn, and she hates me to mention her name, so I'm going to do it just to embarrass her. Um, I came into service, honestly, and I'm sure you're very familiar with this, but when GVSUD decided to build a new, uh, office building, new warehouse office building out in, in Marion, uh, it, it, the initial plans were for $16 million worth of a warehouse. And that was just exorbitant in my mind for our community. So I, I ran to try and wrangle that in and try and, and get some sanity and control and save, save money, frankly. Um, and they broke ground on that building two weeks before I was sworn into office because they knew what was coming if I, as soon as I was, uh, I was placed. But from that point on, it's been a whirlwind of community service. Um, I sit on the Canyon Regional Water Authority Board as a Board of Trustees. I'm on their construction committee. Um, I hired their, I was part of the group that hired their new general manager after we made a change. Um, I served on Sybalo's Planning and Zoning Committee until I was thrown off the committee. Um, and then moved on to other challenges at GVSUD. Well, we had to, uh, place a new general manager, um, had to hire new staff, and, and that's been another, another big project. But the, the biggest feather in my hat is, uh, the settlement of the GVSUD-Sybalo lawsuit that had been going on since about 2016, 2015. Um, the, the crux of the lawsuit was that Sybalo wanted to take certain service areas from GVSUD and, and sued GVSUD to forcibly take that land from them so they could service it and get the income. Uh, that is a very generic overview of, of what the lawsuit was about. But when I came into office, that was one of the, one of the things that I told the general manager at the time is we've got to settle this. We've got to get, this is ridiculous. Our citizens are paying lawyer fees on two sides. They're paying Sybalo's legal fees and they're paying, um, GVSUD's legal fees. So I'm pretty proud that was settled last year. Got that done and over with, and now we can save money and move on with business as usual.
I learned something today. I didn't know that lawsuit was settled. I knew it was a big deal, but yeah, you were kind of getting screwed on both sides at the same time from different angles, right? Because you had to pay taxes to both, or fees to both entities.
Right.
And then they're hiring lawyers. Do you like lawyers, Jason?
Lawyers, lawyers always win, man. Anytime there's a lawsuit, the lawyers always win.
You can be guaranteed the lawyer will come out on top if nobody else does.
Every time.
Well, that definitely makes you qualified. I mean, you've been through all that. Oh my gosh. And you got kicked off the planning and zoning. You said, I don't want to go too negative on this, but man, I see a pattern of people coming in here kicking, getting kicked off the planning and zoning, right, Jason?
Yeah.
Who was the other one? We had Farias. I don't know. They kicked, they chased Stosh off the council. I mean, man, if you're doing good work, I guess they kind of come after you, huh?
Yeah, I got some serious mafia issues over there in Sybalo.
Thank you, Jason, for verbalizing it that way because that's honestly what I call it. It's the, it's a bit of a, uh, intimidating mafia jackbooted thug type of mentality with, with some of the people over there. And that's, that, that's one of the many reasons why I'm running. We've got to change that.
Yeah, of course. And, and you know, and so now that they're not paying the lawyer fees, the city has to raise taxes. They're just going to raise taxes and keep their money. Tell us what's going on with the tax rate increase. What are your thoughts on it, man?
Well, a couple of things we have to remember. The city of Sybalo, and I'm not sure of the most current statistics, but the city of Sybalo ranked in the top five, if not the top number one city for, uh, missing tax revenue because we have, um, retired disabled vets living in our community. We're proud of our veterans. We want our veterans here.
Yeah.
Um, but because the way the laws are written, Sybalo is put at a huge disadvantage simply because people want to live in our city. So one of the things that Mayor Allen has, has really been working hard on, and I hope to be able to support him with, is petitioning Austin to make sure that we, we're subsidized. We have, it, it, the, the government, the state government cannot penalize us for supporting our citizens and expect us to operate at the same level as a normal city of 40,000 people can. It, it, that's just.
Especially when they're passing the law. You know, they pass the law and say, hey, you gotta, you gotta play by these rules now, and we're not going to give you any money for that, you know?
Yep, yep. Shirts gets a little bit of a reprieve. Shirts is in a similar situation, not to the extent that Sybalo is. But because Shirts runs so close to Randolph Air Force Base, because of the physical distance of the city limits to Randolph Air Force Base, they're given, I, I, I don't know what you'd call it. They, they receive compensation to a certain extent, but it's only a fraction of what the loss is. So they're the only ones that are receiving anything, and it's not enough for Shirts to survive either.
Well, I've been, you know, a little involved in this. The last bill for this was 1613, right? And so I don't know what it's going to be called this time, but somebody should introduce it again. It affects our community as a whole greatly too, right? Because we're, um, because if we're lowering the other people's property, property taxes, right? Because everybody else is picking up the tab for what's something the state wants to do, and we all agree it's a good thing. Well, then let's, let us take the credit for it because we're the, we're the ones paying type of deal, right? But at the same time, it's a very noble cause. The state has some money and they could subsidize it. Last stat I heard from in this region, and I may not be accurate, but I think Shirts gets like $400,000, $500,000. It's costing them about $3.4 million.
That's similar to the numbers I heard also.
Right. So that's a big chunk of change. You don't have to have a property tax increase if you're getting some money from the state. But the good luck, you know, it's hard. There's a lot of people, you know, the session's coming up, you know, 2025. Good luck going to the state and trying to get them to do anything, but all you can do is try.
Absolutely. Uh, times are tough everywhere. And the last thing anybody wants to do is have to pay more taxes. But when we're put at a serious disadvantage for our citizens, for our communities, simply because of a law that, that's wrong, that's got to be rectified.
Well, and I think Sybalo did it right too, in my opinion, because you, you know, obviously you have to let the voters decide anyway, but that seems like the fairest way. And the state kind of mandated that. That's something that's good, right? I mean, you have to go to an election. So that's, uh, that's great. Um, in your intro, you told me, uh, did you say you're from up north somewhere?
I'm born and raised in Oregon.
Okay.
And, uh,
What part?
Little town on an old Indian reservation called Chiliquin.
Oh, wow.
Uh, far southern Oregon, near Clamath Falls. Um, graduated high school in the Willamette Valley, went to college in Portland, lived in Grants Pass. The last time I have kids, my, one of my kids is in Bend, uh, living in that area. And my father is still out there. Um, yeah. But I'm, I'm a happy ex-Oregonian. I love the state. It's a beautiful place. It's just too bad it's in Oregon.
Well, they, they have something we don't have here in Texas, and that's rain, right? Especially on the.
But they've got an overabundance of rains.
Yeah. So my, my aunt and uncle live in Eugene.
Yep.
And I just thought it was interesting because we had McGlocklin, to be confused with McGlockthin in here. And, and he was, and he's a Yankee too, you know, of course, I'm from northern Michigan, so I just had to ask you a little bit about that. But you have a place you can still go visit because you have family there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, great. I, you know, I just had, wanted to clear that up. Hey, the mayor of Selma, the, with the lowest tax city in the region, Jason, here we go. He's New York, Long Island baby. You know, he's going to be at home watching his Mets, you know, here we go. So.
I, I live by the, I live by this phrase, uh, I may not have been born here, but I got here as quick as I could.
Yeah, yeah. No, and that's great. And that's, that's the story of Sybalo though. It's hard to find people that are from there anymore. I mean, you have to really, you're campaigning. You know who those people are. It's hard to find them. So, uh, let's talk some old business. Um, what's going on with those houses across the street from HEB? Is that settled? You settled the lawsuit. What about that one?
Not even close to being settled. Um, another one of the reasons why I'm running for city council. When I was on Planning and Zoning, that issue came up to P and Z. And so I spent a lot of time investigating, studying, trying to learn the laws and, and what the whole process was that put the people in that position. And, and the more I, I learned, the more my heart just went out to those people. Um, these are folks that, that bought a house trying to establish their family, quiet little beautiful town of Sybalo, um, by no choice of their own and, and not to the city's detriment, HEB comes in across the street. And all of a sudden, Main Street-Sybalo becomes a main thoroughfare. Um, speeders, traffic, everything is improved for some, and I'm, I'm not going to go into the details because I don't know all of the details, but those houses on Main Street were zoned, um, commercial one, which would have allowed them to sell their homes to be able to have basic businesses come in, um, an insurance office, uh, hair salon, things like that. Nothing like a convenience store or anything like that. So the people said, hey, we want to sell, we want, and we'll sell to these businesses. And they had an opportunity to, you know, make some money on the sale of their home to a business across from the largest business in, in Sybalo. And, and many members of city council said, no, no, there, there's problems with zoning. There's problems with the laws, and we can't let you do that. So these poor folks are, are subject to, um, to their kids living in an unsafe environment where they can't even go outside and play in their front yard, uh, because of the traffic. Um, I thought it was just an absolute ridiculous move that the city of Sybalo reduces the speed limit up and down there because that'll stop the traffic. That'll, that's all they needed to do, you know? It's just ludicrous. Um, but the short-sighted intimidation that went along with those residents is something that's got to be rectified. Those, I'm, I'm a strong advocate of landowner rights. If you follow the law, you, you should be able to determine what's done with your property. And those people have no choice. They, what's the say? No, that no say, no choice, no voice is, are the signs out there?
Talk about an iron fist. The, the city council of Sybalo has kept people from selling their houses over there?
Well, they can't keep them from selling their house. Therefore, they're more than willing to sell, sell their house to another residential customer that would be subject to the same thing that these families are subject to.
Yeah. Who wants to live on Main Street right by HEB? I'm not saying it's a bad place. I don't, you know, it could have. Some people may find that desirable, or they could, you know, otherwise those are going to, you know, it'd be rentals, but you know, it should be.
So it's zoned commercial, but you can't sell it commercial?
Well, no, here's what happened. So here, I know I got a little bit, bit of background on this one too. There was some accident that happened 10 years ago, 20, 15 years ago, when they were setting up the properties and they zoned that area commercial. And the homeowners apparently didn't know about it. And then they decided HEB was coming in. These people are like, well, we, we're looking at selling our houses. And I'm sure some real estate agent was digging around and they're like, holy cow, you're zoned commercial. This is worth a bazillion dollars. So the people are like, we're going to sell our houses. And they're like, well, you're residential. And they're like, no, it says we're commercial. And then they had, the council got together and then told them basically, no, you're right, we're going to switch it to residential and you don't have a say in it essentially. Something like, close to that, right?
You, you've, you've got the crux of it. Exactly.
Jeez.
Yeah. And so these, these people, and the problem is, is, and it is a little bit of a problem because they have neighbors behind them. So, and so on and so forth. I, it seems to me like some sort of mixed use like New Braunfels has where you're in the neighborhood and then there's like some, you know, mom and pop type busy, you know, little offices and that kind of stuff in these old homes might be a better solution or create some sort of historical thing with EDC incentives or, you know, I hate to get more government involved, but I'm, I'm, I'm with you, uh, on this one. I, I think that, uh, you know, let, little less, little less government, you know, intervention would be good. But I think that's something that you guys could put on the agenda and change, right? I mean.
I, I believe so. And, and it can, the, the challenge for the homeowners and, and developers is that if it comes before city council and they deny it, they've got a long wait before they can bring it up to council again. So they actually removed it, um, as a.
Didn't have the vote.
Yeah, they, they didn't. They didn't. So it could come up again at any time. But also to your point, Kevin, we also need to make sure that we're taking into consideration those homeowners behind those houses. And we need to ensure that, that we're taking care of them and watching out for their needs too, because their property is just as important as, as the ones on Main.
Somebody's going to be building a wall and somebody else is going to be paying for it, huh? All right.
Well, I'm a strong believer that developments got to pay for development. So if they want to bring those businesses in, then those businesses are going to have to pay for taking care of their citizens.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. And I, I think that's reasonable. And the, the, the value of having businesses along that stretch is pretty high.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's a nice place to go, you know, downtown Sybalo. I mean, oh my God, it used to be Harman's and, and the pizza, uh, Catalanos. Yeah, that was it, right? And, and the jewelry store came and then a few other things and then boom. But now you, I mean, it's like, it's like party town. You can go bar hopping, walk to like four or five different places quietly, of course. You don't want to mess with the noise ordinance, but.
Yeah, because those, those trains are really quiet.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I'm not going to ask you about that, I don't think. But I mean, uh, I think that one's pretty settled for now. And let's, it's quiet for now. So do, do, tsh, all right, there you go. But, uh, all right, here we go.
I'm sure this will get brought up again, uh, in 2025 sometime around November.
Yeah, right. There you go. Right. What, uh, the, uh, the police, so Johnson, I followed Johnson. We got to have Monica back in. There was a lot going on with that school district and their 37 million dollar deficit budget they're running this year.
Oh my gosh.
But, uh, we knew it was going to end this way, right, Jason? We know, we saw it coming, right?
Right on the wall.
Right? We saw it coming, you know? Um, uh, but the, the police officers in school, so the state mandated, you have to have police officers or some sort of safety officers, armed chaplains, whatever, in schools. And then they gave the schools, uh, gave the districts $15,000 per school, right? Well, then I, but then there, all of a sudden, there was a, Sybalo had an MOU or some sort of a, I guess it was an MOU, some sort of a contract with the district. Everything was going good, but then all of a sudden, Sybalo's in the news and you know, everybody's chattering on, everybody's mad at each other in town on Facebook. So what happened with that?
Well, you can put this as another one of the reasons why I'm running for office.
Okay, good.
The SROs was a, a major frustration for me. Um, I have spoken with people on, uh, on the school board who gave me the, the inside scoop on how all of this went down. And I, I'm, I'm not going to name names, but certain Sybalo city council members went to the school board, went to school board members and said, hey, we're going to remove the SROs. And, and the school board flipped out because to your point, Kevin, they'd already committed to, for the contract, for the money and for the officers. And if Sybalo backed out, that means that the rest of the districts would be hung with that bill. So they, they were scrambling, trying to understand what the direction was. So those city council members, those Sybalo city council members that, that brought that to the school board did that without bringing it to council, without even getting a, a, a commitment from the rest of the council that this was a direction that they would consider taking. So when it finally did make it to council, they brought it to council. The, the citizens, thank God, stood up and said, guys, this isn't going to happen. And, um, when the vote came, those three that brought it to council were three that voted to keep the SROs. So hypocrisy, thuggery, um, call it what you want, but, uh, thank God, we've still got SROs in our schools. We, we need them.
And it seems like you guys, that your city manager, Wayne Reed, really put a lot of work into it. Cause I asked him about it and I asked if I could, you know, take a look at some of his notes, uh, you know, in case something happened in Johnson or another school district in the area. If, you know, he kind of built his own roadmap. You know, him and the district, they figured out a, a way, you know, to work everything out. And thank God it worked out. But it's not as easy as, give us 70,000, you can have a resource officers, different levels, different schools, different calendar. But it benefits both entities. And in either way, you're paying the school taxes or you're paying the city taxes. The taxpayers are paying either way. So, you know, it seems like, well, if, and they can use, Sybalo has a resource officer, so if they're not in school or whatever, they can use them for other things, right? Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
But you can't put a dollar amount on our kids' safety.
No, you can't. No, that's for sure.
And that was the real issue for me in all of this was safety and security. And, and I've had several teachers approach me and, and they're very blunt. Are you for or against the SROs? There's no question. I'm, I'm for them. And they all tell me about the importance of the, the mental support, the security that students have by having SROs visible and in the schools. I think that their presence is invaluable, not just for the, the physical security.
And having the same people in the schools instead of different people, you know, renting a police officer from here or whatever, that also helps too, because there's a lot of benefit. They get to know, especially in the high schools, the kids. And if the kid's getting in a little bit of trouble, instead of being a jerk and arresting them, I mean, he might deserve to be arrested.
Sure.
But there's a way to do that, but, because once you arrest them, you know, there goes your, his chance for getting in the service or his chance for, you know, so they kind of like try to massage those kids a little bit through.
A little counseling.
Yeah, yeah.
Additionally, just from a logistical standpoint, you know the lay of the land better if you're in the same place every time. You know what I mean?
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's good. Instead of showing up and saying, hey, do we have a map of the facility? That's a good point.
Well, and you, you want trained people taking care of our kids. I, I, I appreciate, everybody's job is important, but, um, rented security officers do not have the proper training, the proper vetting, the, uh, the formal security that, that schools need, frankly. And, and I, it's sad that we're having to face these, these situations over and over again in the United States. And thank God, we've never had to. But we've had one of the worst cases in the U.S. and in our area and.
Yeah, that, how, how did it get to the point in Sybalo where council members were negotiating contracts or at least ideas with other school board? Like, it seems to me like, hey, I got this idea. Yeah. And then, uh, yeah, I, I kind of like that idea. Or maybe I don't know if I like that idea. And then you call your city manager and say, is there any opportunity to make this work? Well, you know, that's what I do in Selma, right? I don't decide. How did, I mean, they just, they just did it, you know, having lunch or something and.
Um, I, I think Jason used the term, it's the mafia showing up again.
Okay, I got you. All right. We'll just leave that right there.
And, and also another anecdote, um, my eldest son, while he was at Doby, actually had a knife pulled on him.
Oh.
In school, um, in the cafeteria.
From another student?
From another student. And, um, we were called, obviously called to the school. And I, I thought the school handled it very, very well. Um, I'm sorry to say that the kid that pulled the knife ended up in a secondary school and pulled out a regular population. I don't, I don't know what happened to him. But, but that was a situation that was very well handled and resolved, but that was an officer that, that handled the process.
Nice.
We were very satisfied.
What, what would you think is the, the biggest issue, um, with their, what, what they got going on? So like, if you had a, you know, I said, I think the last one, I said, if you had a magic wand, which I hate these kind of questions, but if you had a magic wand, you could change anything, what would it be about the current political, uh, the current, the current elected officers in place? If you could change anything, what would it be?
Another item on my checklist. Um, certain city council members have created a, a division between us and them. There's a mentality that they don't have a responsibility to the citizens. And that's been proven out by several of the issues that's come to city council, um, where the citizens have stood up and said, you're wrong on this. And city councils, certain members' response is nothing. They don't say no. They don't say yes. They just don't respond. It's gotten so bad that, that's again, certain city council members have surrogates answering their emails for them. They just will not talk to people. I don't know if they're afraid of conflict. I don't know if they're aloof. I, I can't answer for them. But I, and during my campaign, that is one of the things that I, I tell everybody that will listen. I guarantee I will respond. I guarantee I will answer every question. I will respond to every inquiry and nobody else will do it for me. I will.
Wow, they got staff members now for council over in Sybalo? What's going on?
Well, they're staff members, but you know, family, friends, whatever.
I got you, right. Same type of thing. Yeah, I talked a little bit about Wayne with the resource officers, Wayne Reed. You know, I've had, um, you know, some run-ins, of course, back in the day with, you know, Bob, uh, Herrera. Uh, I was gonna, I was trying to think of his middle name and I just, I, I was like, it's, it's, it's TR Herrera, Toll Road Herrera. Just kidding, Bob, if you're watching. All right, there you go. But anyway.
Made it halfway through the show before getting mentioned about the toll road. Good job. Good, you're getting better. You're getting better.
Never going to let them live it down, man. I'm never going to, because we never want to see it happen again, right? Yeah. So how, uh, do you know, do you have a relationship? Have you talked to Wayne Reed before? Have you met him? How, what do you think of him? How's he doing?
I think the world of Wayne Reed. Um, again, on GVSUD, one of, one of the complaints, one of the criticisms that, that we had heard from citizens was the breakdown in relationship between GVSUD and the city of Sybalo. Uh, you know, whether it was the lawsuit or just general animosity that there were, there were conflicts. So I facilitated a meeting with the general manager at the time at GVSUD, Wayne Reed and Tim Fuess. Uh, just to sit down and let's open the doors of communications, guys. We cannot operate adversarially. We're partners here. We're serving the same people. And at that point in time was really when I started to get to know Wayne Reed better. And, and I just think the world of the guy. He's as buttoned up professionally as, as any manager I've ever known before. But you can always count on honesty, integrity. Um, he'll tell you the answer, even though he knows you may not like the answer. Uh, you can always be guaranteed the truth and he's not afraid to stand up. Um, my, my biggest fear is losing Wayne Reed because he is so good at his job. You have to know that other bigger cities, bigger entities are, uh, candidate in him, trying to, to get him to go to work for them. And to lose him in Sybalo would hurt the city.
We'd be back at, you know, where you have to, you have to go up, put the search committee together and on and on and on. And those guys that are good are, are ladies that are good. They're, they're worth their weight in gold. And that's why sometimes people, why does this person get paid so much? And some of them, I agree, they don't deserve it, but some of them do.
Yes, sir.
Right? And that's the problem going back to the, with the, the SUD, you know, with their, their, you know, 16 billion, just kidding, million dollar office, you know, it's.
Oh, by the way, it's 23 million when it was done, Kevin.
Oh, really? Okay. Oh, it's, it's an incredible facility. I don't know if you guys have seen it. If you go out to Marion and go south.
You can't miss it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's the Taj Mahal. That's what we politely call it.
Yeah. Yeah. And so.
It's pretty.
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah. It's pretty big. Yeah, it's pretty expensive is what it is. Yeah. But, uh, you know, the same type of thing. You got to be careful because sometimes people get in, you know, they build facilities like that and then they get the big contract and the big car contract and a $400 a month cell phone allowance or whatever it is, right? And then you, next, you know, you're like, why is our budget so big? You know, why are we charging so much? So.
And I've been through two general manager searches in the last year or two.
Oh, really?
For GVSUD and CRWA. And whenever you have a transition, you have to put your company back out on the market again and, and try and, and really attract the best and the brightest. The best and the brightest aren't cheap.
Cheap, right.
And it's going to cost you more money. So I'm, I'm a firm believer in cultivating the talent that we have as much as we possibly can, because that will save us a lot of money in the long run.
Man, you must be, you're like a wealth of knowledge for a candidate running for city council. Normally people like, no, it's no slight on anybody else, of course, unless you're an incumbent or unless you've served, you can't talk on the level that you, that you talk on. So tell me about like, how's the campaign going? What's, what are you hearing from voters?
Uh, the campaign is, is going well. Um, I, I knew when I threw my hat in the race that it was going to be a big, big challenge. Uh, when you're running against, uh, an incumbent that is so ingrained in the city of Shirts, um, and, and has relationships with people all over the place, the first thing you have to overcome is, is let people know that I'm not them. I'm somebody different. And here's what I've done to prove my worth. Well, that takes work and it takes effort. Um, between, uh, meetings and mailings and, uh, internet, you know, social media, you, you, uh, I, I, you've always got people telling you what you should do and what you're doing wrong. And I'm trying to take a full, well-rounded approach by using every avenue possible to be able to, to get the word out about who Steve Cooper is. Um, because I was involved in, I'm, I'm already well, relatively well-known in the community, um, but not in this kind of capacity. So, uh, the, the candidacy is going well, but it could always go better.
There, you, you just wish you could talk to everybody.
Amen.
Right? But you can't, right? So that's why you come to the. Right? But you can't, right? So that's why you come to the podcast studio. And then everybody can talk to you. So I'm, hope I'm not screwing up the questions here.
Well, I hope I'm not screwing it up for you. So.
Little advertising.
You guys are doing great.
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah. So, well, I, I guess, you know, do you call yourself Coop? By the way, because you, when I first, you know, I was going to call you Steve and you're like, hey, you know, I shook your hand. You said Coop.
Well, it's, it's kind of funny you'd say that. My current lovely, beautiful, significant other's ex-husband was named Steve. So Steve is the last thing that is said around our household.
I got it, Coop.
So you, you, I think you understand where that comes from. Even, even my kids call me Cooper. My grandchildren call me Cooper.
Cooper.
So it's, it's a term of endearment and I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. I got you.
So that's why the name is what it is.
And, and you have, did you even put Steve on the ballot or is it just Cooper?
I put Steve on the ballot, but if you notice on all of the advertising, exactly. Steve is small, the Cooper is big.
There you go. Well, is there any last thing you want to say to the voters?
I, I want to reiterate some of the things that I said before, Kevin. I, I, I really want, and this sounds so trite, I want to heal our city. I want to get us back to where we were when I moved here 20 years ago, where we were a, a community of, of people that cared about each other. We had leadership that, that was involved. Every city has its drama. Every city has its conflicts and issues. But Sybalo is just running, running rampantly out of control. And, and, and I, I want to guarantee that if I'm elected, I promise I will not follow the same methods that, that my predecessors, predecessors have. I, I want to, I want to bring positive direction and open communication between myself and citizens, anybody, anybody that has anything to do with our city.
Well, Cooper, I'm not going to call you Mr. Cooper.
No, don't do that.
All right. Well, well, Cooper, thank you so much for coming in. You know, everybody needs to go vote. Election Day this year is November 5th.
Early voting starts on Monday, October 21st.
Yes, yep. So, and you can vote on, there's a Sunday in there. So look it up. There's no excuse for you guys in Sybalo not to get out and vote. There's 12 candidates running. Be informed, go out and vote, you know, it's, it's so important. And especially when you have good candidates like Cooper here, he is on the ballot as Steve Cooper, but good luck to you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the time.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Thanks.